All right. Hi, everyone. Is everyone awake still? I mean, we're not, we're not that late in the night, but we could get there. Just kidding. Okay. So, good evening. My name is Neha Sabramania. I use gender pronouns she and her. And I'm a policy analyst at the city. So let me start my presentation by sharing my screen because that would be helpful. All right. Okay, can everyone see my screen? Okay, excellent. So tonight I will be presenting on the proposed naming policy. That includes the proposed approval criteria for naming, the process for identifying names, and the public involvement in the overall naming process. And before I begin, I'd like to just quickly acknowledge that there were many staff across the organization that have contributed to the development of this policy. And I'd specifically like to acknowledge Chris Berry from the Community Development Department for his role in leading the earlier stages of this policy development. So assigning a name is a powerful and recognizable identity for a public place or facility. And the adoption of a citywide naming policy provides a systemic and consistent approach when considering commemorative naming proposals for city facilities, properties, and other assets. And for the sake of this policy, a city asset is defined as any feature or amenity within the city's fixed asset inventory. So this includes public buildings, streets, parks, natural areas, recreational facilities, community centers, regional trails, meeting rooms, auditoriums, plazas, and basically any other physical property owned by the city. The naming and renaming of city assets often requires regular, sorry, often requires significant resources in terms of changing names on signs, maps, and literature. And additionally, excessive or constant naming changes can be the source of confusion to the public. So for these and other reasons, great care and consideration should be given during the naming process. Additionally, the city's focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion also makes this point in time, this an opportune time for the adoption of a city naming policy that is thoughtful and comprehensive. A central goal in the naming of city assets is for the selected name to reflect the significance of a feature or the, and the community that it serves. The proposed naming policy provides a list of guidelines for the naming and renaming of city assets. And some of those guidelines are on the slide in front of you. Names should be appropriate to their location and remain relevant as the community grows and changes. They should engender a strong positive image. They, and they should have some form of historical, cultural, or social significance. It's important that naming or renaming city assets should always best serve the interests of the community and adhere to the adopted city equity statement and the city's continual efforts to instill DEI as an essential part of policymaking and delivery of city services. The proposed policy provides the city council with the authority when naming assets after individuals, naming of unnamed streets or alleys, renaming of streets or alleys, and all exceptions to the policy as written. And then the city manager will, or the designee of the city manager would have approval criteria and authority for naming of all assets outside of the city council's authority. So for example, this would include naming of streets and alleys or meeting rooms in a new facility. I'll go through a couple of examples of how this would work later in the presentation. Okay, this is the fun part. So the policy sets a process for identifying potential names, which could be used when the opportunity to name a city asset arises. The process involves the city manager's office creating an initial potential pool of names, which will then serve as a citywide repository of names that all staff across the organization can use when considering naming. The goal is that this repository of names will be developed in a collaborative manner with substantial input from a range of stakeholders, such as other city departments or divisions and the equity team. So for example, the Addressing Committee and Washington County Consolidated Communications Agency, or WACA, would be important stakeholders to engage in the development of potential names for streets and alleys. And then once this initial potential list of names has been created, staff will seek input on the names from the Hillsborough 2035 Community Plan Oversight Committee. The intention with this step in the process is to engage a community perspective on the potential names and get feedback on the names and the city's approach to naming broadly. We feel that the 2035 Oversight Committee would be an appropriate body for this type of engagement, given the range of community perspectives and interests that are represented in the committee. After receiving input from the 2035 Oversight Committee, city staff will incorporate the feedback from the committee and then maintain an updated list of approved names that will then be available to staff across the city. So this process is set up to be iterative, and city staff will continue to replenish that repository of names with new names and then periodically seek input from 2035 Oversight Committee. I do want to mention, we have yet to determine the exact process and structure and timeline for engaging the 2035 Oversight Committee, and we will make that progress upon receiving support from the city council for this concept. Again, the broader goal in putting this process in place is to serve city staff with an approved list of names, which have been vetted through appropriate staff and community channels. I also wanted to touch upon a couple of other areas of the policy. So naming a city asset after an individual provides a way to acknowledge the sustained contribution that has been made by that individual to the city. Except in rare circumstances, naming city assets after living individuals or someone who has been deceased for less than 10 years is discouraged. In any case, when there is an intention to name a city asset after an individual, city staff should conduct a thorough review into that person to deem them as an appropriate namesake for a city asset. Again, the city council does have final authority in naming the city asset for individuals. And any requests from the community to name an asset after an individual or otherwise will be submitted and collected by the city manager and then routed to the city council for consideration. Naming for donations, sponsorships, or other philanthropic opportunities should be determined on a per-project basis in consultation with the city manager. And there may be unique public involvement processes that involve the appropriate community body in the naming of an asset, which involves a donation or a sponsorship. The specific requirements or obligations related to a sponsorship are not addressed in the naming policy, and they should be included in a separate contractual agreement with the city. Renaming is a multi-step process that should require a thoughtful and comprehensive approach. The city council is responsible for renaming of city streets and alleys, and the city manager's office is responsible for renaming all other city assets, with exception to renaming assets after individuals. Are y'all keeping up with me? I'm like, all right. This is like a tongue twister. I didn't realize it. Okay. So renaming should only be proposed if there's a compelling reason for doing so, and historically used or commonly used names should be preserved whenever possible. And finally, the naming policy also references a few department-specific guidelines for situations in which staff work with an advisory board or commission. Specifically, this policy calls out the Parks and Recreation Department, Water Department, Library Department, and Community Development Department. For the Parks, Water, and Library Departments, the process for naming involves staff presenting a list of names, naming options to, from the pre-approved list to their respective board or commission. And then that board or commission makes a recommendation to the city manager. When it's applicable, the city manager will then take that recommendation to the city council for approval. So for example, if it involves naming something after a person or if there's an exception to the policy that's involved. The Planning Division is responsible for the administration of naming public and private streets and alleys throughout the city as a part of the division's overall responsibility to provide a consistent addressing system. The Planning Division will follow the same process as the other departments for the naming of streets and alleys. The renaming of existing streets and alleys will be initiated by staff through the official street name change process application, which then goes to the Planning Commission for review. And after that, the Planning Commission makes a recommendation for the city council to consider. So here's the first example. This is a hypothetical example in which we would want to name a Parks and Recreation asset. So the first step is there's a determination for the city to name the asset. And Parks and Recreation Department staff would identify a shortlist of names based on the approved list that has been through the 2035 Oversight Committee and other stakeholders. Those options get, then get presented to the Parks and Rec Commission, and the Parks and Rec Commission considers it and makes a recommendation to the city manager. After that, the city manager can approve that recommendation, or if applicable, the city manager forwards that recommendation for the city council to consider, in which case the last step is the city council considers the naming proposal and accepts or rejects it. The next example is the renaming of a street. So again, it starts with a determination of need to change a name. And then, in this case, the Planning Division staff initiate the official street name change application. That then goes to the Planning Commission for consideration. And the Planning Commission decides to initiate the application. Then there is a public notice and hearing in which a public notice is sent to all property owners within 500 feet of the street segment that has had a proposed name change. And then the city council sets the public hearing date. And then finally, the city council holds a public hearing and then makes the decision on the name change application. Okay, this is the last slide. So I just wanted to touch on the public involvement in the naming process. So upon the adoption of a naming policy, all of the city council advisory boards and commissions will have a copy, will receive a copy of the adopted policy, and will be encouraged to do public noticing and hearing for when the naming of a city asset is on the agenda for that meeting. And again, the 2035 Community Plan Oversight Committee will be engaged as a key stakeholder in the review of the repository of potential names that the city manager's office will put together, which is in coordination with other city staff and other appropriate stakeholders like the equity team. And then finally, if there are requests that come in through the community, those will be routed, collected by staff, and routed through the city manager and recommended to the city council when appropriate. So that's it. And I will stop sharing my screen, and I'm happy to take questions.
Counselor Van Beveren.
I really like the framework that you've described. I'm wondering, and I liked the 2035 Committee being involved. Is, I just don't know the composition of that particular group and whether it represents all, you know, citizens of the residents of the city, you know, sufficiently to generate that list that may be more inclusive or more diverse, or, you know, that sort of thing. Can you, can you address that?
Yeah, so I think that's challenging to expect the 2035 Community Oversight Committee to truly represent the entire city, right? But they do represent a good cross-section. And I was actually looking at the composition of the Oversight Committee over, earlier this evening. And there's community interests, there's business interests, there's the farmer's market. I believe there may also be a community-based organization. There's, I know there's a Tannusborn representative. So we just felt, based on the resources available, that that was an appropriate body, at least as a starting point for the process. And if anything, I mean, we can revisit the engagement process at a later point, maybe after a year or so, after we see how it's going. And there's, there can definitely be conversation about this process specifically with the, the hiring of the new community engagement manager or coordinator that we're in the process of hiring sometime soon.
Yeah, I was just gonna add, Neha, I think, just to add on to what she said. It's of all of our boards and commissions and groups that we have, it probably is, it's one of the largest ones, and it does have a strong representation of a variety of cross-sections of the city. So anyway, just thanks, Neha. I was, I agree.
Neha, if it's okay, and Counselor Van Beveren, this is, these are the current lead partners on 2035 Age Celebration, Biennestar, City of Hillsborough, Clean Water Services, Community Action, Early Learning of Washington County, Energy Trust of Oregon, Hillsborough Chamber, the Hillsborough Community Foundation, the Downtown Partnership, Farmer's Market, the Ministerial Association, Hillsborough School District, Hillsborough Schools Foundation, Metro, Oregon DEQ, OHSU, Hillsborough Medical Center, OSU Extension Service, Project Homeless Connect, Trimet, Walton Soil Water Conservation District, Washington County West Side Queer Resource Center, and West Side Transportation Alliance. So.
Okay, so where's the diversity?
It's, it's, I think, represents a pretty, as was mentioned, a pretty good.
That's great. I just wasn't aware of the composition. And I think that really answers that, that question. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other thoughts?
I have a question. I was a little unclear about the naming for new streets and alleys. Would, that's one thing I've always thought about. Developers would come in and say, I want X Street to be named this. It, well, did I understand you correctly that they would have to also choose from this list, or no?
So I'll attempt to answer this question. And then if there's another person on staff who would want to jump in, please go ahead. So my understanding is that for the new names, there's, there's a staff Addressing Committee, which works to identify a list of street names that, that are potential street names for, for new, for new streets. And I believe that the process is collaborative with developers. And then there's also collaboration with WACA, so that there's, there's coordination for first responders and stuff like that. So my understanding of the entire process with new streets and is that it's a collaborative process with developers. I don't, I think at this point, part of the, part of the benefit of adopting a naming pol, a citywide naming policy, is that it gives us kind of a framework to work with developers in that process. Because I think it could sometimes be developer-led, or it could be city-led.
Thank you. That, that helps. That makes sense. One thing I do want to say is the naming for people. I understand the intent there, but I do think it's important in terms of like, what a historical memory for the city of Hillsborough is. It is to include consideration for folks. Basically, you know, the policy doesn't prohibit folks who are alive or have been deceased for 10 years. But it makes super clear, that's pretty much not where we want to go. And I think there are instances where that couldn't be the case. So I, I think that's the strength of the language around naming for people is something I probably disagree with. I'd probably have it be a little bit softer to value the historical impact that folks have given to the community. You know, I also think of, I think of Shirley Huffman Auditorium, Tom Hughes Civic Center Plaza, Jerry Willey. I forget what the Arancos Station Plaza is called beyond Jerry Willey Plaza, maybe. But I think about that in the context of we've had this like semi-tradition over the past three or four mayors to name an asset after a mayor. And I know Steve, this is going to be a real comfortable conversation for you. So please, jump in whenever you want. But I, basically, what I think about, when I think about that, is like, I, I just think it's important to recognize that like historical memory and something that's in the city of Hillsborough that doesn't have this incredibly long history that is recounted and known by everyone. I think we need to take a role and make a place in that process. One of the things I've absolutely loved over the past several months is our resident Dirk Knutson coming to council and recounting tales of people who have done great things in the city. I had no idea who they were. So it's fantastic. The Hillsborough Historic Society, Washington County Museum, et cetera, trying to be able to incorporate what historic, sorry, what history means in the city and what is historical. Two examples I think of in that process, which not 1,000% related to the naming policy, but I think they prove my point, is like the A and W family that the Shoe Park Aquatic, the Aquatic Center kept and kept there. That isn't something that holds historical, you know, it's, it's not something that holds historical memory for me, but Chief Nota did. And I say that to say that what is history within Hillsborough is something that's different to every person. But I think that we, as a city, can play a role in that by highlighting and shining a light on people who have made a positive impact. I also think, in that same vein, because we're talking about history, you know, potentially including HSLAC in there, Historic Landmarks Advisory Committee, trying to figure out a way that they can be a part of this as well. Just because they have that, they're already working with landmarks. They're working with that sense of place and that sense of place memory that I think this naming policy is trying to get to, to a certain extent. And then I would say it's just, this is a really fantastic, thank you. This is one of those where we can get on that next step and be proactive to, you know, this was started in part because of an alley naming conversation several years ago. So I think this is a really great step forward. All of my input isn't to take away from the fact that I really like the direction we're heading. I look forward to multiple people providing input on that list that you're gonna create.
Thank you, Counselor Martin. So just to address a couple of the items that you brought up. So with the naming after people and, and specifically the maybe tone of the language that's in the policy right now, I think that the, the, so this was something we talked about as staff in terms of what is our recommendation to put in the policy, all the while knowing that the city, we're proposing that the city council has the ability to name after people. This was just kind of, the 10 years was just kind of based on just some research. It, I wouldn't feel comfortable saying it's an accurate average across all naming policies within all cities, but just doing kind of a quick review of some other local policies. Around the 10-year, if not longer, was actually where most of the policies that I reviewed kind of stood at. For example, with Hillsborough School District, their policy actually says 20 years, or recommends 20 years. To your next point on the, on the opportunity to commemorate history or honor history, I think the sentiments that you shared are pretty much in line with what the intention of the policy is. It's not written to be as prescriptive, but it does give staff a pretty good framework to explore and dig into those conversations that you posed related to history and how different people, depending on the identities that they carry, understand and interact with their history differently. So we certainly don't go into great detail in the policy right now. But like I said, the, the goal with this was just to give staff an intention and framework to have those conversations and to clearly have the city council's support in doing that.
I'm gonna jump in here. So I really like, I really like what you've done. I like the idea of it going through the Equity Committee and the 2035 Committee. I did like what Anthony said of including maybe HSLAC or another historical group there. I think that's a great idea. And the concept of creating a list of approved names ahead of time, I think is excellent. I really, I think that's a good place to start from, in case there's a name that maybe doesn't work. The only point where I think I take an issue is at the end where, in some cases, the naming is with the city manager, and it doesn't continue on to, you know, a consent agenda, I think. And in my mind, I think all of these should at least go to the consent agenda so that it's, it's in a public meeting. If the public has an issue with it, it's, that's the opportunity for them to voice their concern. You know, I think about that street in South Hillsborough where there was an effort to pick a name that was, that was culturally sensitive, but the pronunciation of it was something that really bothered a lot of people as a racist term, right? It was totally unintentional. But it wasn't until, you know, a person in the public saw that and took an issue with that and brought it to our attention, that we were able to address that concern. So I do think that all of these decisions should be, should end up with the city council, probably on a consent agenda. 99% of the time, there's gonna be no issue, but I think that's an important part of the public process.
Okay. Um, so Counselor Allen, just to make sure I'm understanding you correctly, your feedback is that you would like to see all names regardless of if it's a naming after a person and all, and to go through the city council?
In, I think that very last step, you know, the city manager creates the agenda, so the city manager is not going to put something in the consent agenda they don't agree with. So I think that that last step, if the public is gonna spend $80 million on a police station, for instance, you know, I think that that name should be on the consent agenda, and they should have some say in what it, what it is in the end.
If I could maybe just add on something there, and I'm struggling to come up with some examples. But maybe Counselor Allen, if you could give us some time to go back. I just want to make sure in checking with staff on that, that we're not gonna be adding a ton of workload to staff and also to the city council, right? If there's some things that will then all of a sudden have to come every time to the council. I, again, I may be wrong on that, but we'll look into that and get back to you. I, I don't have any concern with what you said. I just want to make sure we're not, that I'm not thinking of something that we should be thinking of right now, so.
Or just another thing that I thought of, I don't know if this is too much. Maybe council could just, in one meeting, approve the list of approved names, so that it's done. Have to come to us every time.
Um, this is Counselor Karen. I was thinking that about too, Kyle, that why don't they just show us what the list of names are? And then we get to give some input because I, we're gonna take responsibility for what names are out there. And I would rather have opportunity and be able to look at it. And maybe, you know, being able, if we have that opportunity to catch something that may not be appropriate for public. So I'll just stop there.
I just want to say one more comment. Eventually, there will be a decision that's made where we name something the public is upset about it. That criticism should be directed at the city council, not at the city manager. So I think we need to bear responsibility for, for that, if it does happen.
You know, one, one thing I guess I'd also want to just request that there's enough vetting so that if a name comes forward, we don't end up, you know, with a four to three vote. Because if it is a park, a facility, these are great assets of the community and things that bring us together. And, you know, things we use and enjoy. And I would want to avoid, you know, I guess, controversy to the extent that we could, you know, attached to, you know, a new park, for instance. I know when, so when I worked in the school district and chaired the naming committee for, I think, probably, I think it might have been six to eight of our schools, including high schools, middle, and elementary schools. And, you know, so there was, there was a very thorough process that we did when we gathered people, you know, together, you know, both in terms of outreach to the community. And it probably. And it probably hasn't changed a whole lot, you know, since then. But it was a very good process, and Neha, I appreciate the fact that you, you know, looked and looked into their process. And because, you know, certainly they've had great school names. Some have been geographical, such as South Meadows. Some have been concept names, such as Century and Liberty. Others have been, you know, after individuals, such as Paul L. Patterson, who is the only governor for the state of Oregon, who has come from the city of Hillsborough. So, you know, and even, you know, newest at Fallady Ridge, you know, recognizing the, you know, the native and indigenous people from the area, so.
I have a comment or a question, I don't know. Neha, thanks for your work on this, and this might sound a little weird, but when I think about my, first of all, thank you, Counselor Martin, for the HSLAC idea, I love that. But when I was in the military, every post I was on, it was MacArthur Boulevard, Eisenhower. It was like all the generals, right? And it was just like dudes, dude way, right? And I was, is it ridiculous to ask or to track, or whatever, some equity in the names? Right? Like Mayor Calloway just mentioned that at Fallady Ridge. I'm not sure if I'm saying that right, but I love that, that that was the naming of that school. I think it's such a great idea. But, you know, just to keep a tally of like, how many people or communities are being represented? So it's just not one community is being represented all the time. I don't know how ridiculous that request is, but I think it, you know, I'm just tired of, you know, Washington Street. I'm just, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, I think I hear what you're saying in terms of, let's just look at what, you know, what the naming looks like right now to get, and so what directions we might want to go in the future.
Like really broaden the scope of what we're gonna name.
Right, yeah.
Of the names. And Counselor Al Karen has brought this up too. Like just, you know, is it Smith and Jones and Barber? Or are we gonna change the, you know, the grouping of names that we can take from? That's more representative of our history, of the actual history that's happened here, whether a person, a singular person knows that history or not, the actual history that happened here. But, and an inclusive history, by the way, not just, for example, Meek Road. You know, great. Well, Meek took land, right? So like, what about before Meek, kind of thing, so. Thanks for hearing me out, my weird way of saying all that.
Yeah, I, so Counselor.
Feel free to laugh in my face.
You just said a lot, so I don't know like what specifically to respond to, but I think, I think I understand what you're saying. I'm not aware of any type of analysis on all of the names of our assets, because there are so many, and I know for a fact they're probably stored in like 1,000 different locations. But I think that the kind of concept that you're pointing to is the concept that we would probably talk about in the process of making that repository, right? Or like, the questions that we would pose if we go, when, and if we go to the Equity Team to have this type of conversation. So I'm not, I'm not sure about like an actual analysis on what different elements of history or people are actually represented within all the names. But I think what you're saying is kind of consistent with like the sentiment of the policy and the intention.
Great, and thank you for trying to understand what I'm saying. And I also think it's dangerous when we name it after a person versus a geography or a concept or whatever. I was actually standing in the Tiger Woods Center when news broke about Tiger Woods. It was incredibly awkward, right? And I would hate to be, you know, to have that happen here, right? So I like when we were saying like the at Fallady Ridge, or Century, or Liberty, but can it still be representative of people who lived in this land? You know, that kind of thing, so. I don't want to, yeah, I'll stop there.
Okay, if there's no other comments or feedback, then we will.
I have a suggestion.
Okay.
Picture this, the Callaway Solid Waste Transfer Station.
Unfortunately, I don't think, well, give me a few more years. I may get to that point with Metro where they want to name this after me.
Rick wins the comments for tonight.
All right, so with that, we will adjourn our work session, and we will reconvene in executive session. We have a separate link that was emailed to us by Aubrey. So this meeting will completely close out, and then we will reconvene, let's say at 8:35, that's about seven minutes, gives us time to, you know, take care of what we need to at home, and then migrate over. So thank you. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.